Good evening and welcome to the July 2, Claussen City Council regularly scheduled city council meeting. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing for the invocation by Councilwoman Ms. Sue Moffett.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Goddess of the universe, keep our tongues from evil and our lips from speaking guile, implant humanity in our souls, teach us to be strong in temptation and trial, and be patient and forgiving when others wrong us. Help us to understand and proclaim the truth that not by might and not by power, but our spirit alone can man prevail. Grant unto all people and nations the blessings of liberty, justice, and peace. Let injustice and oppression cease, and hatred, cruelty, and worry pass away so that all people unite in love.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Eris?
Yes.
Councilmember Milan?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Here.
The first meeting on the agenda is the consideration of approving the Consent Agenda, which includes the minutes of the regularly city council meeting from Tuesday, June 19.
Madam Mayor, I move the Consent Agenda to be approved as listed.
Support.
Any comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Eris?
Yes.
Councilmember Milan?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Madam Woolley.
And the motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the-
You have to say yes, that carries.
Yes.
Whatever you want to say.
Thank you. It's been a really rough day. I apologize. Are we good? Yes. Am I good? The next item on the agenda is a presentation of the proclamation for Claussen resident Julia Allman. We're going to do that down here.
Come on up here.
This is one of the really nice presentate items that the mayor gets to do, and this is really special to me because I've known Mrs. Allman since I was in elementary school. And Mrs. Allman was always the cakewalk lady at the Hunter Community, Hunter Elementary School. We were there and we did our fairs. And from other schools, when they would consolidate, you continued to do that. And the popcorn lady, you always made the popcorn at all those things. And we played volleyball on Monday nights with you and your family. So for me, it's a really special honor to be able to honor you. And this is to honor Mrs. Allman. She's, I left my glasses. She's 100 years old on July 7. And you've been, you've raised nine children here in town, been very, very active at the Knights of Columbus and PTA. And what other items have you participated in that you'd like to share?
Bingo at the KSC Hall. Active, working the bingo at the KSC. I just retired from there.
Well, I guess at 100 you're allowed.
Find somebody else. Doing my job.
You're not replaceable. And I'm sure they all are aware of that.
Thank you.
So this is a special honor for us to recognize you and all of the great works and deeds for so many years that you've done here in town.
That's so nice of you.
Oh, well, thank you so much for being part of our community and making a difference for so many years.
Thank you.
I'd like to present you with this certificate of recognition-
Okay, thank you.
-from the city of Claussen and me. So thank you. Can I give you a hug?
Oh, thank you.
Congratulations.
The next item on the agenda is a presentation by Harry Anderson from the Police Department for some special service awards.
Madam Mayor, members of council, it's my pleasure to come before you tonight to recognize four of our officers for five different awards that they, that their peers in the department have voted them to receive. The nominations came in, our awards board met, and we decided to go before this council meeting to present these awards to the officers. The first ones I'd like to recognize is Officer Daryl Adams and Officer Stephen Haley. You guys want to come up? Tight to get in there with the gun balls. Officer Adams and Officer Haley tonight will be receiving our lifesaving award, which is always a great award to receive. As you look back in your career, you can remember those times with great appreciation that you've actually saved a life. The lifesaving award is signified with a certificate and a bar for the officers to wear on their uniform with a white, a red stripe, and a white to wear proudly on their uniform. So hopefully, we've got them here and they can wear them on the 4th of July. On April 18, 2018, at approximately 10:58 PM, Officers Adams and Haley were dispatched to the 500 block of South Morias for a unresponsive male victim that was on the floor and not breathing. The officers arrived simultaneously with Alliance Mobile Health, they worked as a team where the Alliance Mobile Health set up IV and established an airway while the officers worked to administer a shock from the AED. Then they moved to starting to give CPR. The officers worked diligently with Alliance to bring the subject back where he had a, back to a regular heartbeat. They saved the officers, or the victim's life. The victim was then transported to the hospital because all hands were needed on deck. Daryl Adams drove the ambulance to the hospital, which if you're not used to doing that, that's quite a feat in and of itself. So I want to say that the quick actions of Officer Adams and Officer Haley and their diligent work and their caring resulted in the saving of the life of a 76-year-old victim, Claussen resident. It's my pleasure to present the lifesaving award to Officer Daryl Adams and Officer Stephen Haley. Hopefully, I have these in the right order. Come on, up here. Wait, yeah, pictures. Bigger smile.
I want to say, thank you so much for all that you do every day. This is going above and beyond, but you guys are committed to this community all the time, and we all really, really appreciate it.
They do a great job. Okay, the next award that is going, that I'm going, that we're going to award and recognize is Officer Veer-
He was here.
Officer Veer, Officer Haley, and Officer Shear. We tried to cover it, only there's so many bodies these days. Okay, this, this award is, is given, it's the award from another agency. We try to, we have an award in our, in our program that is in our scheme of awards as far as our color scheme and shapes and everything. So if someone gets an award from another department, quite often they can't wear that on their uniform because it just doesn't, it doesn't fall under our dress code. So in those cases, we, we recognize the award with an award from another agency. That is a gold-blue, gold-blue, gold bar that they can wear prominently on their uniform to recognize that they have, they have received an award from another agency. Every year, the Mothers Against Drunk Driving has a Mad Salute Michigan Law Enforcement Officers Award. That award is, is, tries to encourage police agencies to have their officers go out and combat drunk and drugged drivers and, and make those arrests. They have a criteria for the number of arrests that the officers have to make, and they're then rewarded with this salute award every year. This year, and it's, it makes you proud when you go to these awards because a lot of agencies get rewarded for doing half the work that these guys do. And our guys, we, this year, we've got three officers that received this Mad Salute Award, which I think says kudos to our department. We've got a bunch of great guys. So anyhow, in 2017, which is, this is what was tallied up, Officer Scott Veer made 46 arrests for drug and drunk driving, drunk, drug impaired driving. And Officer Scott Veer, who went on a call, is also one of our drug recognition experts. In 2017, Officer Steve Haley, he made 34 arrests for drugged and drunk driving impaired during the year. And Officer Jake Shear, who's our other DRE, drug recognition expert, he made 32 arrests for drunk or drug impaired driving in 2017. It is my great pleasure to recognize these officers for their great efforts out there to make our streets safe. Because if you, if you look at the statistics, drunk drivers kill more people than a lot of other things do. And they're out there, who knows how many lives they saved because of making that, that drunk driving arrest that night, drunk drug driving. So it's my pleasure to recognize them for their efforts. Congratulations.
Again, thank you so much for the hard work that you guys do. We really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is a presentation and an update from Senator Marty Nolanberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Actually, I was surprised that you guys took me in on such a busy week. I know you've got a very important day coming up, and I look forward to being there. We're going to have a lot of fun with that. As you know, I try to give you an update at least once a year, and this is my opportunity to do that. I think one of the things to remember is that our economy is doing really, really well. Unemployment is low, people are working, state income coffers are up, and as a result, there's a lot of great things in the budget. So I'm going to kind of highlight a few of those things tonight. For the eighth year in a row under this current governor, Governor Snyder, he's been able to complete a budget well before, well before October 1. And this is significant because a lot of our stakeholders want to know what, what to expect. And especially the school district, their budgets begin July 1. And so by getting it done in June, like we had the last eight years, last seven years, eight of eight now, provides a sense of certainty. It's no different than your own paycheck in your own household. You want to know what, how much you're going to get paid and what your bills are, you know, same thing at state government level. So just eight years in a row. The budget includes a rainy day fund of over $1 billion, which is a, you know, a great testament to Governor Snyder and, and his understanding of budgets. Some of the highlights, the budget is $56 billion. $10 billion of it is general fund dollars. Revenue sharing is up $21.5 million, which is good for you guys. Roads are up $330 million, over and above what you would normally get. This is because of the improving economy. $2.4 billion of additional funding towards roads has gone in, or going in, since 2017. Again, this is because of the road package that we had a few years ago and also prioritize spending. I think when you look at this budget, you know, the highlights, police fire, roads, infrastructure, and education. And so I think we're meeting a lot of those targets. I'm also going to talk a little bit about K-12 education. I don't normally kind of present this to a council group, but I think it's important to note that the current year budget is the highest that it's ever been, at $14.8 billion. That's the most amount of money that we've ever appropriated for K-12 education. It is also the largest per pupil increase in over 17 years. It's been up $2.2 billion since 2011. There's $58 million going into school safety initiatives. And when you think about what happened, you know, in Florida and other places like that, I think the legislature has recognized the importance of trying to appropriate dollars to, towards schools and public, and school safety initiatives. I actually had a bill in that package that mostly, all the school districts were very supportive of. And what it would do, it would require that the school district partnering with the local law enforcement to do an assessment of their current school safety protocols and also implement a plan as well. I think it's important that we keep our schools safe, and so my bill does that. So that's part of the proposal that was passed. $30 million went into mental health support systems. We obviously know that that's been an issue. $25 million has gone towards school safety grants. I think you're going to see more money coming in both these areas as the budget year, you know, unfolds next year. $3 million into the Okay to Save program, and then also $500 million more for at-risk students. Every school district do have at-risk students, and so there's a lot of money going into that. And so just, that's sort of the highlights of the budget. I do want to touch upon some of the policy bills that have passed. I'll go through it kind of quickly. The first one, you know, I've got a bill that would create a statewide stormwater utility system. I know this is important to all of our cities. A lot of my neighboring school, a lot of my neighboring communities have been sued because they tried to create a stormwater utility. And, and so my bill essentially would eliminate the lawsuits that are occurring. I don't want to get too far into the weeds, but we had a, we thought we had a, the bill coming out of committee, but the chairman of the committee was diagnosed with cancer, and so he missed a couple of weeks and we couldn't get a hearing scheduled, but there seemed to be a lot of support for that. Also, expanding housing options for seniors is a bill that I worked on that passed into law. Also allowing handicap placards for seniors, that became law as well. That essentially would allow physical therapists to issue these handicap placards, which previously they were not allowed to do. Reducing some of the red tape to help teachers with the teacher shortage issue that we're faced with. And also the Michigan State situation, there's a whole wide sweeping slew of bills that we dealt with on that, and I was a part of that package as well. The opiate epidemic, and just so you know, and I said my final comment, as of July 1, physicians will no longer be able to prescribe more than a seven-day supply of medication for acute pain, not for chronic pain. So there's a difference. Acute pain is you go in for a tooth, you know, removal or knee operation, hip replacement or something like that. You know, physicians can no longer prescribe more than a seven-day supply starting July 1. And hopefully, our physicians are following the law. And in my opinion, and based on statistics that we have heard, there's no need to prescribe more than a seven-day supply. Most of the time, they can still, they need, if they need more than a seven-day supply, they can still go back to the physician and ask for it and make a case for it. The other thing that the bill does, it eliminates the excess, you know, prescription that sits in a medicine cabinet, gets in the hands of the wrong kids. And so again, that's a bill I sponsored. So it's been a very active, very busy, you know, session, busy year, and happy to give you the update and thanks for allowing me to update you. If there's any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Any questions?
You guys are ready for the 4th of July, I can tell. So am I.
I would, I would like to see you more regularly so that we get more updates, maybe twice a year instead of just the once.
Instead of once a year, I can do twice a year.
That would be great.
I'd love to do twice a year.
Thank you. I'd appreciate that.
All right, we'll set it up. Sean will set it up for us.
Thanks again. Thanks for all the hard work.
Thank you. Thanks, Senator.
Chief Harry Anderson is returning because it looks like our-
I know we're out of order, but Officer Veer made it back in from the road, and I'd like to, I'd like to recognize him publicly for his efforts. So Scott, could you come up? Again, Madam Mayor, members of council, we're here for the award from another agency and to recognize Officer Veer, who I spoke of. Officer Veer won the Mothers Against Driving Mad Salute Award this year and for his efforts in arresting 46 drunk drivers and drug impaired drivers in the city of Claussen in the year 2017, as well as being one of our drug recognition experts. I'd like to recognize his hard work and his dedication and service to the city of Claussen by giving him this award from another agency certificate and bar. So congratulations.
Chief Anderson, I believe that Sergeant Veer has received this award in the past as well. Were there other officers that are, have received this in previous years?
He, Officer Veer, this is his third one, I believe it is. No.
That's what I understood that he's-
He's a, he's a real go-getter out there on the road, so.
To make sure that we gave that additional credit. You've been consistent for many years.
Yes, he has.
I'm being committed to taking care of that.
Smile.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is consideration of approving the request by Alliance of Coalitions for Healthy Communities to hold their Shatter the Stigma 5K run on June 1, 2019, at the city park. Health communities, Oakland County or FAN, has submitted their application for a special event to host their Shatter the Stigma 5K in the city of Claussen on June 1, 2019. Parks and Director Kathleen House has reviewed the application and is suggesting the request be approved.
Ask questions now or after?
After.
Madam Mayor, I move the request by the Alliance of Coalitions for Healthy Communities to host their Shatter the Stigma 5K on June 1, 2019, in the city of Claussen be approved.
Support. Questions, comments?
So the question and concern I had was in regard to the balloon release. I don't think we should allow that. They're dangerous to the environment, and I, I just don't think it's something we should allow. I think we should not approve that portion of the request.
Was there any specific, on how many balloons they were releasing? I didn't see that.
It doesn't say. It just says a balloon release, and, you know, they get stuck in the wires, and they're dangerous to animals and the environment, and I just don't think we should allow it.
Yeah, it has become a problem lately with all the balloons and that.
Yeah. But they're pretty. So are butterflies.
Burt seat is bad. Tracks, rats.
So do we have the ability to say we, like, do we have to reject the whole thing, or do we just strike that piece?
You can strike that out, and I can notify them.
So does that have to be incorporated in our-
Motion?
Motion, yes.
It should be.
Yes.
So he has to rescind his previous motion and make a new motion?
Or there can be a motion to amend.
Motion to amend.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the Alliance for the Coalition for Healthy Communities' request for the event on June 1 of 2019 to have the balloon release removed from the application and the approval process.
Support.
Are there any other comments or discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Milan?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Madam Woolley?
Yes.
Councilmember Eris?
Yes.
And the motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the consideration of the list of bills.
Madam Mayor, pay the bills.
Support.
Any questions on the bills? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Madam Woolley?
Yes.
Councilmember Eris?
Yes.
Councilmember Milan?
Yes.
And the bills are going to get paid. City attorneys report.
No report, Madam Mayor.
City managers report.
Just a couple items. Our report from SACRA was we were up 28% again in recycling volume from June of last year to June of this year. So recycling continues to climb. That's great news. They are working on an app so that you can check any item to see if it's recyclable and the process to dispose of it if it is. So they are working on that now, and once that's ready to go, we'll let everyone out there know. They're trying to make it a little more user-friendly, the app itself. So SACRA is working on that now. I was out of town, but I understand we had some DTE issues again with power outages. I commend Harry Drinkwine. He was in contact with Mike Palchesco on three occasions at least, and then texting. All but one of these outages from the past week were caused by trees. Trees into lines causing, there was heat that actually caused a sagging line, and the line fell into the tree, but they were out as late as midnight during these outages, trimming trees to, to restore power. So again, they were frequent. I know there were several, I found out from neighbors, that our power was out a couple times. We believe all but one location right now has been restored, but as they continue to do, they're promising us that they are going to be diligent in tree trimming starting in August. They had to do some emergency trimming to restore power in these cases, and the substations are continuing to get notice. And again, I am hearing from people that they're not getting response on the toll-free line. If no one calls you back, please call or email me so that I can follow up with Mike, because everyone that calls and leaves a message with contact information and their address is supposed to be called back, and their issue is supposed to be dealt with specifically by an engineer. So if that's happening, please call or, or email me, and I will follow up. But they've been, they've been much more responsive, but I think they know, based on the article, I was sent a copy of, these communities, Royal Oak included, are, are on DTE to make sure that this gets resolved. So again, continue to be diligent and let us know through that toll-free number, and then if you don't get response, please either email or leave me a message here on my extension 248-435-4500, extension 111. That's all I have.
I did want to mention that I can tell you that DTE's been clearing trees on Big Beaver for a good month or longer. So I was hoping that they get to us quickly and address it here.
Mike did say in August, we're scheduled in August for quite a few tree removals, and that should go right into late fall, I believe. So we are on their radar, so.
And again, I'm sure Councilmember Albrecht would love to see him as a representative-
I did pass along, we would love to have him here at a meeting, so I will stay on him, and hopefully he'll get enough courage to be here.
Mr. Pollock, I did call that DTE line, and if you, there's two options when you call in. One is for an outage and one is for power quality issues or something along those lines. If you, if you select the outage, it routes you to normal customer service.
Okay.
So I think people are a little bit confused by that. I'm sure DTE wants us to report the outages to their normal customer service, but there's no way to kind of, yeah, report that as a message to this line.
I'll pass that along, that maybe they not put that option. To me, the best, the best thing to do would be, if you press that, it gives you the, the number there and then lets you know that if you had another issue, to press the other option. Because that's usually what it is, individuals that want to report. And Mike's telling us that's what he wants reported, because then he can go right to the areas of servicing, but their communication internally still needs to improve because there were some outages that didn't even show up, and then they showed outages on the map that didn't actually occur. So there's, they still got a ways to go with their communication, but I will ask if they can, again, I, I agree with you, I don't think it's good to have that option. Just leave a message with your information and your address so that someone can get back to you.
Or could we get the instructions that we have on the website updated?
Or could we get the instructions that we have on the website updated with, you know, press, be sure to select the comment thing to leave a comment or whatever, just so that people aren't caught off guard? So usually, you know, you're not listening, and then they start reading the list, and you just press a number to see where you go.
Yeah, I went through the process a couple times to see what the different options were, and it was not, wasn't really intuitive. I did notice, according to Mr. Drinkwine, the city engineer, that DTE has some generators over at 14 Mile and Bywood on some flatbeds.
That was, that was adding, there was a, still a brownout issue in that area, and that's due, according to them, is due to the sagging lines where they weren't getting full power. And until that can be repaired, they brought in the generator to boost power, and I believe that the issues of the brownout in that area have been corrected. But they have to be, another one, it has to be permanently corrected so they can remove the generator.
I did have one more question, just to confirm. Garbage and recycling goes out Thursday morning this week?
Yep. It will be Thursday morning rather than Wednesday morning.
Is that it?
That's it.
City clerics report.
Mayor and council, I do have a few things, just since we are now in a new fiscal year. I did update all of the fee schedules, the forms, and any information on the website, since everything went into effect July 1st. It's quite an extensive project today, but I think we got it all updated. If you find anything that's off, let me know. All the forms, if I revise it, it'll say 7/2018 on the bottom. Kind of did some basic consistent formatting for a lot of things. And then once the new special events and mobile food vending officially becomes effective after the 10-day posting, we will get that on there as well as this massage therapy ordinance to get it codified into UNICOD, so you'll see that updated. Right now, it's still in the 10-day period, so it's not yet effective. We actually just had a gentleman come in today to already request the mobile food application. So I said it's not here yet, but it will be on Monday. So we'll have more information as that comes out, because I spoke with Kathleen House at length again about where she would prefer locations if they're there at the city park, and how to disseminate that information to the park attendants and things like that, because we don't want damage to the grass and all that, and to have issues with traffic. So we're working through this. Again, it will be a work in progress as we get through it, but we've already seen interest. People have been seeing it in the news, so it's good. I'm hoping to bring forth a couple ordinances once Mr. Albus returns, so we can kind of go over some of the proposals, and then meet with John as well to kind of draft some language for some of the things that we've been reviewing. I'm hoping to have the election equipment again available over the next few weeks after we test them out. I'll have one of them stationed out there just as people are coming in, kind of reviewing to see what's, you know, on the ballot or whatever. You can kind of see it there, and you can do your own test to kind of be more prepared for August. And again, the voter registration deadline is July 9th, so we've had a lot of people walking in. I know that we're, the Secretary of State's trying to publish it, really get people to register to vote, to vote in August. And I'm hoping to have, this is the big question, the absentee ballots for the permanent people and those who've requested them. We're hoping to have them mailed out the 5th, but the latest the 9th. With this week and kind of a shortened thing, it's kind of hard. I still have to test them, and we've had a lot of other things going on, so we're hoping. I'm hoping to do that. That's a big question that comes up, and we still do have the opening for the administrative clerk. We've had some good applicants, so just wanted to remind everyone, still up till July 12th to apply for that position. And that is all.
You had mentioned a couple times in the past that you needed election workers. Are you all set with that?
I believe we have enough new applications, so I think we're good right now. We'll always take applications for November, but I think we're pretty much set where I'm just kind of trying to figure out with training and other things for August. But I'll always take an application.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, unfinished business? New business? Well, it is 4th of July time here in town, and it's a busy, busy time. The, wanted to let you know that the Midway and the Craft Show tomorrow is open from 3:00 until 9:00 p.m. There'll also be Shell Camino rides from 3:00 to 9:00 at Shawm. And then on Saturday, well, 4th of July, we have, the parade starts at 9:00. The race is at 8:45 down 14 Mile. The Midways and the Craft Show is open, Craft Show's open until 7:00, I believe. And then we have fireworks at dusk. I can ask that anybody that's interested in helping with the Claussen Parade, I would love your, to have your help for marshals and balloon handlers that will be carrying a helium balloon down the parade trail. You can email me directly at debbie@claussenparade.com. Again, that's debbie@claussenparade.com. And then Saturday is our Cinema on the Streets, and that is, the movie's going to be Shrek, and the street closures are at 4:30, and then, I want to double-check, the movies at 9:00 p.m., oh, 6:30 to 9:00 is games and entertainment, and then the movies at dusk. So come out and support your local businesses, and it's another one of those longtime family Claussen traditions. And actually, the DDA won a special award in recognition for their Cinema on the Streets. That's all I have.
Well, I want to thank our construction people. They hit it on the nail. We have concrete, we're at blacktop, rather. We have a nice road out there. Went through a couple months of nastiness, but thank you, everybody. And also, I wanted to, Dick Julian told me from Julian Brothers, if any of the kids that are over 16 or 17 that are looking for a summer job, or older person wants to look for a job, he can use some help down there at Julian Brothers, so I just want to pass that on to some of the seniors that are, got nothing else to do but go in the pool all summer. Lions Club, we will be down at the park with our wonderful dime toss, and I think we're selling ice cream social. We're having that down there, too, since that was canceled. We will have ice cream down there as well as snow cones. So it's a busy day in Claussen, so have a good time. I'll see everybody there.
Anyone else? Okay, on to public discussion.
My name is Ree scripture. I'm at 148 Park Drive. I'm also on the Planning Commission's Own Board of Appeals. Before I start on what I came tonight to talk about, I would really like to thank you and the rest of the commission for the balloon thing that you just did. That is, I'd seen that, and I was kind of upset about that, and I really, really appreciate that you took leadership on that environmental issue. Moving on to my issue, that I'm here for the night, excuse me, and I'll be brief. I have a list, and actually, it's just a partial list. City of Troy, city of Royal Oak, city of Birmingham, city of Rochester Hills, city of Pontiac, Macomb County, Macomb Township, Wyandotte, Ypsilanti, Sterling Heights, Harper Woods, Farmington Hills, city of Battle Creek. Again, this is just a partial list, but this is a list of cities that have ethics ordinances and/or a board of ethics to review ethics violations and complaints. Claussen's not on the list. I would like to see my city on that list, and I know the ordinances are something that the commission is looking at right now. I know we're looking at our stuff on the Planning Commission, updating planning ordinances. And yes, Claussen does have a few provisions in the ordinances, such as 4.26 disallowing nepotism, 4.32 prohibiting gifts and annuities, 4.33 prohibiting the influence of legislation for personal gain, but to me, these are anemic and insufficient compared to some of the more robust ethics ordinances that I have been looking at. Ethical administration of government invites citizens' confidence in and respect for government. Therefore, I would like to see more robust ethics ordinances, provisions in our ordinances. One of the ones that I thought was particularly good when I was looking at them, Rochester Hills has some very robust ones, not the city of Rochester, but the city of Rochester Hills, excuse me. One of those is that a public servant shall not take any action or create the appearance of giving preferential treatment to any organization or person. So where that might apply here, if we had such an ethics section in our ordinance, when this council chose to only solicit bids for a new planner from McKenna, instead of opening the process up to several of the other organizations and individuals that offer planning services in Michigan, to me, that created an appearance of giving preferential treatment to an organization. And I know that another planning commissioner has reached out and asked about that also, and I think that that was a problem. So that's just an example, but what I am actually here today is requesting that this body research and adopt more robust ethical ordinances and consider an ethics commission to go with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public discussion?
Hi, my name is Annie Fenton. I've been a planning commissioner with the city of Claussen since 2014, and I just wanted to make a comment that I'm concerned a bit about the lack of transparency in the process around the selection of the new city planner, and I would, I would really welcome a conversation between the commission and the city council forthcoming. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Public discussion is now closed. The next item on the agenda is consideration of moving into closed session to discuss attorney-client privileged information in accordance with MCL 15.268H.
Madam Mayor, I move the meeting to be moved to closed session to discuss attorney-client privileged information in accordance with MCL 15.268H.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Mayor Woolley?
Yes.
Councilmember Aris?
Yes.
Councilmember Malin?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
What this means is council will go into closed session and then come back outside into this area to adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much.